I think she got it. It just went through.
We're gonna go ahead and get started. I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight in these very trying times. We're gonna stand for a pledge of allegiance to start the evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With unusual circumstances that we're going through, we have one board member tonight. We're being allowed to do this as long as we vote as a board to do it. We have one board member that could not be here this evening, so we're gonna telecommunicate her in. The next thing we're gonna do, I need a motion for her to be able to vote with us this evening remotely. So if we could have a motion.
Some seconds.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
Mathis.
Aye.
McFarland.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Ringer.
Aye.
Zimmers.
Aye.
That is seven ayes.
Okay. Okay, next, we're gonna move on to approval of the agenda. Recommended that the board approves the Bart 16th, 2020 Agenda. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Mars.
Aye.
Mathis.
Aye.
McFarland.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Ringer.
Aye.
Zimmers.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
That is seven ayes.
Okay. President's comments tonight. I'm gonna have a couple of things to say, then I'm gonna relinquish the rest of my time as President's comments for Superintendent Gill to kinda give us an update on what we're doing school-wise. The thing I would like to say first, kudos to you and your staff for these last couple, probably three weeks, actually getting ready for what we're having to go through now. And I would also like to thank all of our administrators in the districts, the teachers that worked so hard to get things set up for students to be able to keep up on their homework and have activities to do. I know it was a monumental task to get that done, and so I'd like to thank everybody involved in that, our custodians, you know, the tech people that helped get all this set up, the cooks, whoever's involved to make this work, school nurses. So I just wanna applaud you guys for having a real viable plan. I think you did a great job with it. So thank you to everybody who's involved in that. I think we're just gonna have to see how it pans out. You know, we might have to tweak it, and if we do, we do. But you guys did a great job of that, so thank you.
I appreciate it. To your yielding by way.
Yielding the rest of your time here.
All right. So just to clarify about the school board meetings as we go forward, not really knowing what we're going to be up against in the next few weeks. This afternoon, we were anxiously awaiting this. It just came through literally at like five o'clock tonight. Governor Pritzker issued Executive Order Number Five, which in part suspended certain requirements of the Open Meetings Act as of nine o'clock this evening. So we're still in session earlier than nine o'clock. But after this evening, specifically rules regarding persons' attendance at public meetings by members of a public body are no longer required. Further rules limiting remote participation in public meetings are also suspended. Public bodies are encouraged to postpone meetings, but where meetings aren't necessary, the public body is encouraged to provide video, audio, or telephone access. So members of the public have the ability to access the meeting. So as you know, we already livestream our meetings and always have, and we will continue to utilize that resource. Thank you to Greg Dunham, who's doing that at this time tonight. We will also then just wait and see where we are by our next meeting, but be prepared to do some teleconferencing. Please take your laptops home, and we'll help you get everything set up, or we can call in, as you see we did tonight for Board Member Mathis. So that does help us. It's very hard for us to postpone meetings as we're trying to hire personnel, but things are going to come to a slow here for the next few weeks. But every meeting are important agenda items and roll call items and consent agenda items, which we can, of course, make our meetings very brief and to the point so that we can address things quickly. With that being said, we've had a lot of activity and movement today in getting things ready for our students for their time at home. Governor Pritzker earlier this week, as discussed at our special board meeting this past Saturday, did, starting tomorrow, suspend all school activities for students and for the way that we are dealing with our staff. So we had to quickly come together and communicate to our staff who is to report to work, what the expectations are while they're at home for helping us with the process that we need to know. First and foremost, we had two big things we wanted to get kicked off today. One of them, I can't thank enough, our teaching and learning team and all of our members of our Instructional Support Service Team, who led the process and the preparation for making sure that we have at-home-based learning activities ready to go. If you pull up our website, the banner has "At Home Activities." You click on it, it goes to a site that is designated by grade level and also for middle and high school. You click on a choice menu, and there are a variety of activities that students can do at home, using computer or not using the computer. So if you can pull up your website, even on your cellphone, you can see activities that are listed there that don't even require the Internet. There are some that do require Internet. One announcement I'd like to make is that Comcast has opened up and will have free Wi-Fi access for the duration of this. And I really feel this is important for families to know that they can get online and get free access to Wi-Fi during this challenging time. We will continually be adding activities to this choice board so that students and families have differing activities as we go throughout the week. There are at least two major activities for every subject matter in our district, including even social-emotional learning and physical education activities and music and art activities that are on there for families or family member and friends to do alongside their students and the students who are a little bit older to do on their own. There's even a sheet on both sites where you can kinda log in and even write down what you did, if you wanna share that with your teacher when you return. There's one thing to understand is that during active God days, Illinois State Board of Education has issued a statement that we are not allowed to give grades during this time, nor penalize any student who does or doesn't get on a website and do activities or take note of the activities that they did. We know these are trying times, and that we wanna support students in every way possible. We also know there are a lot of questions to be answered over the coming days about students who are seniors in high school and graduation upcoming, or students who are enrolled in dual-credit classes with Lincoln Land Community College. We have a lot of questions ourselves. We have a whole big bank of issues that we're continuing to look into. So I have committed to make daily announcements to my staff, my families, and our students so that they know exactly what's expected of them during this time. And I will always prepare the board with a message each and every day as things, you know, are evolving and we are learning. So that was the big first step, is to make sure everybody had that pushed out, make sure teachers have a way of communicating with their students. We gave them a lot of ideas and access to different technology platforms. Classroom Dojo is one of them. And teachers today were sending out messages to their students and saying, "Hey, this is where I'm gonna give you more information or where you can ask questions during the time that you're out." So the other thing that we wanted to make sure we set up today were information about where we are going to be doing our meals and where we're going to be serving food throughout this time. Starting tomorrow, on Tuesday, March 17th, we will have drive-up, grab-and-go from 8:30 until 10:00 a.m., and we are going to have those locations at Lampier, Southeast Springfield High School, and Franklin Middle School. That is where we're going to be cooking the food. They have large cafeterias. We have cafeteria managers, and our cafeteria workers are ready to go. I can't thank enough our food servers who jumped into line. We also ordered food for the continuing weeks in greater quantities, the kind that you can bag and go. And starting on Thursday, March 19th, we are going to increase our sites from four to actually 12 sites around the community. And so we are going to be using First Student Buses to go to those four sites, pick up food, and take food to the following locations for distribution beginning this Thursday, March 19th, again, 8:30 to 10 o'clock. These sites will be Washington Middle School, Wilcox Elementary School, Feichens Elementary School, Ridgely Elementary School, Jefferson Middle School. And then these three wonderful organizations that were able to help us out. Pine Wood Apartment Complex, which is in the Seven Pines area where we have many, many students living and residing so that they could walk to the Pine Wood Apartments at 1665 Seven Pines Road, find the yellow school bus, and they'll serve food out of the school bus in the Seven Pines area. Antonio's Pizza at 2701 West Washington Avenue. That's kind of across the street from Strike and Spare West, just to give you a right across from Soccer World. To give you a little reference, we'll have a bus in that parking lot. And that serves a lot of students who live in that area right off of Veterans Parkway by those locations so that they can get food as well. And then also the parking lot at Grace Presbyterian Church, 1800 North Grand Avenue West in Springfield, which is another area where students can walk to and receive food. In the coming weeks, if we find that we need to open up additional sites, we'll continue to work with First Student. They are providing bus drivers and monitors to help with this. And we also have some volunteers and cafeteria workers who are gonna go on the buses and help with the distribution as well. We feel that this is a great way to serve our community in as many sites as we possibly can, but also minimize the sites that we have to keep clean and stock with food in order to distribute the food. We talked today with our school nurse. Our workers that are fixing the food will be screened daily to make sure that they are not coming down with any symptoms or have any concerns of that nature. And we're willing and ready to switch out people, and people have really been great about saying that they will help out in this time of need. Just to kind of reiterate also in the communications that went out is we are practicing social distancing. As you see tonight, we've set up the boardroom differently, and we're sitting differently. The Instructional Resource Center is closed, where a lot of our teachers go to make copies and do, you know, things of that nature. But we do have our Avril, who works in our production center. She works in a room by herself with a lot of copy machines. She's still open for business because we are going to offer packets here out of 1900. We've distributed them to each of the schools as well. So if a family does not have a ability to get online or even look online with their phone, and they wanna stop by and get a packet of materials for their student that's grade-level appropriate, we will be able to have those available out of 1900 between the times of nine and two. And also, they can contact the school. The schools also have access to those packets that they could provide. And as our bus meal preparation starts, and we're going out into the community, we're gonna put some of those packets on the buses too so that we can make sure that all students have access to learning opportunities while we're away from school. Our district buildings, including all of our schools, are closed to public access. They're open for essential staff only. Our principals and administrators will be checking in with those sites daily, making sure we don't have any students that don't know about it or try to come back to school because they're confused or just are a little bit scared in these times when things are different than they ever have been before, so that we can make sure that they find a caring adult and get a place where they feel safe. Before you visit schools or even our offices, if you wanna call, many things can be taken care of, you know, by telephone, and we'd be happy to do that. And that's for all of our, including our business office and different offices that serve families. Just give a call ahead of time, and we will have people manning those phones and making sure that we can help you. Teachers are not encouraged to go to work. In fact, we're asking them not to go into the schools, but work remotely. We provide all of our teachers with laptops so they have those and are ready to serve the students remotely, once again, through those programs that we talked about earlier. If you have any questions, though, please, you know, call the school. We have all the voicemails. We'll be going to the principal's email so that they can see any voicemails that come in, and we can make sure that we're calling back families on a very timely basis and serving their needs. We did send out a sheet to all employees. I know, Mrs. Johnson, you inquired about that, and you do have a sheet in your packet about where all of our employees are going, all of our essential services. Our custodians will begin the deep cleaning process tomorrow of all of our schools, and so we're very thankful for their service to our district. Once again, our principals and assistant principals will be reporting until we're told otherwise at this point in time to assist with this. And also, we'll begin to, you know, make sure that they have the ability to work remotely if we're ever called to do so in this day that we're in now. We are still maintaining our IEP processes for students with disabilities across our district. If there's a parent meeting that was scheduled, your case managers or department chairs are making sure that they reach out. We may have to reschedule, but we also can do some of those meetings remotely. And we're continuing to watch and update guidance from State Board of Education on topics such as these. School-based staff, such as non-certified staff, secretaries, teaching assistants, paraprofessionals, security, in-house front desk supervisors, study hall, all of those classifications, employees, we're asking them to stay home. And we will, they're asked to check email daily and be available if we need to call them. If there's anything that we would need from them, they are, you know, asked to be ready and available if we need them at that time. You know, we have a lot of employee groups in the district to communicate with. We did so today. We're still answering questions and fielding questions, and we're still very closely in communication with the State Board of Education. Governor Pritzker had our state superintendent, Carmen Ayala, have a town hall meeting with all superintendents across the district yesterday afternoon, well, morning, I guess, it was 11:00 a.m. on Sunday, got on a call and was able to, you know, ask any questions, listen to everybody else's questions, and it was very, very helpful. And I was very appreciative of that opportunity. Governor Pritzker actually gave our district a shout-out for our meal planning and preparation today in his governor's address. So I feel like we're on the right road in a time when nobody knew that this path was going to be created for us. So we are mindful that the executive order is through the, you know, 30th of this month, but we are also mindful that we don't need to be prepared just for those days, but for days beyond that, just in case we are unable to return at the time that's been given. That's kind of advice that's been given us too by the governor and by also Superintendent Ayala, to be prepared for a longer stay if we need to be, and so we are doing that. I could talk forever about every single thing we're doing, but once again, I think, starting tomorrow, the social distancing is going to become more in effect here at our office as well. We're gonna be doing a lot more remote calls. I will be reporting until a time when I'm not allowed to.
Are there any questions, Superintendent Gill?
I do. What provisions do we make for students that don't have computers? This might, I understand, I got a call this afternoon that some parent took a bunch of kids down to the library today, which I think will be closing sometime this week.
Sure.
And said that the kids could do their, so the kids could do their homework.
Right. Well, I mean, the homework is not expected, it's not graded, it's none of that. But the Activity Board that we put together, if you have a smartphone, you can see the activities, and there's only a few of them that are online, and they are choices. They are not things that you have to do. There's no mandate or any order. So you could choose the activities that do not require a computer and be able to do those activities. We also have, once again, printed off the packets, and those will be available starting tomorrow at nine o'clock. We have them in the office right here for every grade level. So if a family member rings that doorbell outside and they say, "I need a packet for a first grader," I will be handing them a packet, and that's a print packet of all the materials that you can access. Once again, you can get online with a smartphone anywhere, and you can see the activities. To do the online activities, you do have to have a device, but that's a choice. And it's, you know, it's not something that we think is ideal either. We wish we had a device in every home and Wi-Fi in every home, but we know that that's not a reality at this time. So we have done the options of activities that are not computer-based. And in fact, there are more of those activities than there are computer-based ones. And we'll also be giving those packets out that are copied if a family needs it.
Okay. One other question. How many days are we, about 14 days, about two weeks? So over the two-week span, the janitorial staffs will be in the buildings.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. What are their hours? Are they gonna do full eight hours, or are they gonna do five hours or six hours, or how are we doing that?
During the day, claiming for one.
They'll be working eight hours.
Okay. So all buildings aren't as big as...
No. If we get the smaller buildings, those people, we will ask them to go help the larger buildings.
Okay. Are you gonna be checking them to see if they've got anything going on or not?
Yes.
The virus?
Yes. You and Kevin will be rotating, Mr. Roberts will be rotating to all buildings to check on expectations.
Along with all 15 person leadership, we'll be visiting the buildings to check on the people. And we encourage them, if they have, if they feel sick, just like anybody else in this room, to stay home.
Okay. Now, one final thing. I'd just like to suggest to parents that have seniors that if you have a graduation party venue, don't cancel yet because they're gonna be hard to come by once we start back to school.
Right. Well, we're not gonna give up our graduation spot until we see how things roll for sure.
Well, that's what I'm telling the general public. They need to keep their party venues because rescheduling is probably not gonna be a great option.
We've kinda used the date of April 13th. We're just saying, you know, 'cause that's the first day after spring break that we already have scheduled the day after Easter when people return on the 14th. You know, just, we wanna wait and see what happens and not cancel everything out until we see. But we also know we need to be planning for maybe an inevitable, you know, extension just from reading the CDC and other recommendations. So, yeah, I'm a hopeful, hopeful human, and I always, you know, lean that direction. But we also need to be prepared, so we're doing that. I did, in a debrief today, Mr. Shaver did talk a little bit about the procedures that are gonna happen in schools. We asked teachers today to clear off surfaces, make sure that we could get in there and deep-clean all of the surfaces in the building, all the flooring, all the, you know, wipe down all the stalls and handles and walls. And we're gonna do all the lockers in the high schools, disinfecting the handles and the doors and all of that, and just do a serious deep-clean of all areas during this time so that when students do return, they're returning to an environment that has been completely disinfected.
And as we go along, we will be checking the buildings, and if we need to go back into those buildings for any reason, we'll go back into those buildings and have the ability to call back staff as we...
Mr. Miller?
I actually wanted to piggyback on something Judy was talking about, and you've kind of addressed some of this, that the online learning is an option, but you do have the packets available starting tomorrow for all the grade levels.
Yes. And if you just wanna look on your phones, too, you can see those activities without the packets as well.
But on a side note, I just wanted to applaud you and also Julie, Nikki, all the people behind the scenes in the cabinet. I mean, you've really worked hard to make sure we've executed this as well as we can. And every step of the way, I've been trying to give you some advice and some insights here and there, and you've been like, "I'm on it. We're already thinking about it." So here's one more thing, and I think you may have already addressed it. But for people that choose to elect to take Comcast up on those two months, I know there's a technology survey that parents had to fill out earlier. If for some reason they've missed out on that survey, can we add that to the Comcast button? Because when you go there, it just shows how to sign up for the free Internet. If for some reason they have a technology need and we've missed them on the survey, can we provide a link there for them to let us know if they need a device?
I can check in with my team tomorrow and see what we can do to have that. You know, we do have opportunities to, you know, explore the next step if we were to have to be out for a lot longer, so we're starting to prepare for that. But for the most part, you know, I think we have tried to think of everything, and that, I was really thankful that Comcast did that. That was really, really great. I think they did that nationwide, so that's a lot. We really appreciated that.
I just hope that people take advantage of it, and they'll have, you know, a device utilized.
The other thing, I think, I think Board Member Ringer mentioned, we also have been really in tune with what many of our community partners are doing in terms of opportunities for food and food assistance, not only for the students, but for families. And as those opportunities in our community become available, we'll also advertise that. Nelo, Mitchell, and I were working today to, you know, really understand what other opportunities are out there in the community to provide food. Westside Christian did some, you know, if you have some produce or if you got a little extra produce, and they put together some packages today. And many of our principals went and picked those up, and were able to make those available to families and their community. And we just feel like that's gonna be a bigger opportunity as we go forward. So I think that as those become available and there's other opportunities for families, we wanna make sure that they know, and we'll be advertising those on our main webpage.
So, but in our food packet thing, it's every day, every weekday, no weekday, no weekends, right?
Right. No weekends. Every school day that you would normally go, and any child or family member that comes up and they say, "I have five kids, we're gonna give them five meals for those children." And it has two meals in a bag, so a breakfast and a lunch. I mean, you could make them whatever meal you want, I guess, but there are two meals inside that bag.
Okay. 'Cause I know some schools do make provisions for kids for the weekend.
Yes.
Okay.
And those are still gonna be, so we've been working with the Central Illinois Food Bank to understand if those will still be delivered to those schools and set in those locations where families can still walk up and get, you know, they've been potatoes, onions, you know, fresh vegetables as they come into season, and see if those are still going to be available. I think we could still think about using our bus services to go pick those up, as long as it's safe for everybody to be out and about.
First off, thank you for adding these additional sites and looking at our partners and continuing to do that. I'm just concerned about making sure we have enough meal pickups around the city, so thank you for continuing to add to that. The question I'm getting a lot is, we're talking one meal per student per day. Does a student need to be there to pick up the meals?
No. A family, no. We are going to count the amount of food bags that we create, and if a bus comes back with zero, that'll be, whatever number went on that bus will be counted. We do have to keep that count for, and we've had to fill out a lot of paperwork today. So once again, Cheryl McBride, our director, has been on it. You know, we had to fill out some waivers and things today. All the paperwork was turned in. We do have to have a food handling licensed person in each of those sites. So that's why we reduced our sites down to those locations. So they're the largest cafeterias where we can make the most amount of food in one time and have one food handler on-site by law and have all of that taken care of. So distributing out from those sites made the most sense. And it starts, once again, tomorrow at the four local sites. And then Thursday, we'll be doing the remote sites because we're catching up with our food supply that we had to order today to make sure that this could happen.
And of course, if we're seeing that meals are running low on one location over another, we'll...
Always shift and ebb and flow and create more and order appropriately over the next coming days, for sure.
Mrs. Mathis, do you have any questions? Tiffany?
No, I do not. Everything's been answered and asked, and I think it's a great, great effort, for sure, so.
All right. Thank you.
I have no questions. I have no questions. Everything's been spoken through very thoroughly.
Thank you.
Are there any, are they going to use any volunteers in the preparation of these meals, and how would somebody, how would, somebody ask me?
How they could volunteer? If they, if they want to volunteer, they could certainly call here to 1900 and we would collect that. Peggy Cormany was also helping a little bit, and we have some, some other people in the Title I office, I believe, that are, are set and ready to go to help out if we, we have volunteers. One thing that, that might help is volunteers to ride the bus to help once we get there to get kids kind of lined up and families lined up and get them passed out in an orderly fashion when they're there. So that's one way that we, we might be able to use some volunteers. We would hope that they would be previously kind of background check volunteers. We kind of have to, to think of those background checks as we always do, but we have a lot of people that volunteer in our school every day that may still want to, want to help out, and we appreciate that. In the actual packaging of food, the people who handle the food are going to be our cafeteria managers, but the packaging and then the counting of the bags to get boxes and get on the buses and do all that, we definitely might be able to use some volunteers, and I can just ship those to Cheryl McBride, and, and we could find out what time they would need to arrive and about how long, because the, the preparation is going to start a lot earlier, probably around that 7:00 AM mark, to get those buses rolling by 8:15 to get the food out, out to the families by 8:30 to 10 o'clock delivery.
I, I can appreciate that, but I think with the social distancing, we better be very careful about getting wrongs of people.
And we will, we will monitor that and, and make sure that we're, we're helping with that, with that piece as well.
Anyone else, anything, Superintendent? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move on to Board Salutes. Mr. Mathis, do you have any Board Salutes?
None at this time.
Okay. Mr. Miller, you want to start?
Nothing really, just a second. What Superintendent Gill said, I've bought all the administrators and teachers that work behind the scenes tirelessly to make sure that we are as prepared as possible, so. Ms. Johnson?
Okay. I too would like to add my thank you and my appreciation to the superintendent and all the district staff who have been involved in the processes of trying to help us get through this pandemic here locally. I think you're doing a great job. The challenges are still going to come at you, so we get questions, I know I get questions. People call me, people were even calling me today about what was going on in the city. And I told them I'm just on the school board, but you gotta, you know, you gotta take the calls, okay? So I will be passing those on. I wasn't at the last board meeting because I was attending a Lafayette basketball game. I have been to more basketball games than anybody could imagine right through here. We salute the Lafayette basketball team and all the city teams who have had a great season this year. The coaches have worked hard and the students have worked hard, and so I commend each and every one of them. We were looking forward to going to state to bring him back that title, but God had another plan, so we'll, we'll be patient. I did have an opportunity to go to Harvard Park and to Graham Schools to read, and I had some exciting times. I got an envelope full of thank you notes just the other day, and I don't know exactly what school it came from because it didn't have a return address on it, but we had a good time in Ms. Frasina's class and Ms. Logston's class at Graham. They, the kids were really excited, and the kids in Ms. Logston's class were working on some kind of engineering project similar to what they do at Du Bois', and so they wanted to show me what was going on. They were, they were truly, truly excited, so we had a great time. And I didn't read it at Harvard Park, take that back. It was Blackhawk, okay? But we had a great time at Blackhawk too. Mrs. Moody and I shared a class and we had a great time, so, again, I commend everybody for their patience and what we're doing. We're going to move forward with this and things will, all things come to an end at some point in time.
I don't know if anybody mentioned this, Lafayette Girls Basketball Team, fourth in the state.
And the girls' team, yes.
Yeah, great, great season, great job. I'd also like to commend some of the agencies in town that a lot of our kids would be going to now that they're out of school if they had not cooperated here. I don't think it's just because they're students, it's, you know, community-wide health, but YMCA shutting down, Boys and Girls Club shutting down, a lot of our kids go to those two programs, so I really appreciate them being cognizant of the fact that if we're shut down, that's where they're going to end up, so they're, they're being a big help by shutting their programs down.
Yeah, I'd also like to say thank you and kudos to Superintendent Gill and the staff that's been a moving target, just going to continue to evolve with this. I'd also like to thank the community because there's been a lot of community organizations that have stepped up and offered food and whatnot, and information will be disseminated whether on the website or through email and that type of thing, but that'll be updated frequently, so just stay in touch with that if nothing else. And Tiffany, was the Boys and Girls Club going to go ahead and get meals served as well, as you had talked about that before?
Yeah, we're still working through that only because of how we collaborate with Central Illinois Food Bank and our ISD Nutrition Food Program, and then we coordinate with Melton Catering, so that's how we get all of our meals. Still working through that and hoping to hear something tomorrow to see if there's going to be a service that we'll be able to go ahead and provide. We also had concerns about, you know, have, because people have been asking to volunteer to come to the club and get those things together, but then with the social distancing, not wanting to, you know, always erring on the side of caution that even, you know, best laid plan to contribute to someone being exposed, so just trying to be as cautious as we can. And it's helpful and thoughtful while realizing this is just working through it like everybody else, trying to figure out what the best thing to do is to support the community because we obviously care about kids eating, so still just trying to work through how that's going to go.
Through again?
Yeah, I would say ditto to everything that's sort of been said, and I would second again the thank you to the Springfield community for everything, people stepping up already. We've seen a lot of examples already of people running out food and supplies to people who are in their homes for one reason or another and can't get out, people stepping up and supporting folks in terms of sharing resources and supplies. When, when the times are toughest, community comes out and supports everybody, so thank you, Springfield, for that.
Well, once again, as everyone has said, I mean, I'm grateful for, for all the cooperation that we've had with the staff, administration. I mean, everybody's on board. I mean, obviously we know these are trying times, not only here in Springfield, but throughout the United States and, and the world for that matter. So, just, and Superintendent Gill and her staff have done a great job of communicating with us as a board with regards to, you know, the current circumstances and, you know, things that are evolving on a, on a constant basis. You know, we, we've talked about this, and I think Superintendent Gill mentioned it a minute ago, you know, communication is going to be key, and, you know, our responsibility is to make sure that everybody knows, you know, what's going on at all times. So hopefully, you know, this, as, as Ms. Johnson said, this will pass, and, you know, I think we're being as proactive as we can be, and I just want to thank everybody. I want to thank, you know, the teachers, the staff, everybody that's involved. I mean, we're all, we're all pulling together, and I think in, in the end, this is definitely what needs to be done, so thank you again.
All right, thank you, everyone. Okay, we'll move on to discussion items. 6.1, old business, any board members have any old business they'd like to discuss? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to 6.2, new business, any board members have any new business they'd like to discuss? 6.3, student business, Grace is not here this evening.
Can I just interject that I went to the Lincoln Museum, Abraham Lincoln Museum, when the NPR students read their essays, and it was very, very inspiring. They were from across the county, but it was, it was a great evening to, to hear what those young people had to say. And Grace was one of the presenters, and she did a magnificent job.
That was a lovely event, really nice. Thank you to your Rotary for that.
Okay, no presentations to the board this evening, and we'll move on to business reports.
Right, we were going to have Springfield Learning Academy and Lawrence Adult Education, so we'll push them to whenever. I may actually pass on their packet so that you can see their excitement for what they're doing and see their bullet points, but at this time, we didn't think it was smart to bring in any outside, any outside groups. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Fretz for a business report.
Thank you. President Zimmers, members of the board, attached is a summary of revenue and expenditures for the month of February 2020 for the education and O&amp;M funds. The cash balances and interest report and the accounts receivable outstanding report are also attached. For the month of February, Ed Fund revenues were 4.7 million and expenditures total 10.6 million, with expenditures exceeding revenues by $5.8 million. The O&amp;M Fund revenues were $12,000, expenditures 1.12 million, expenditures exceeding revenues by 1.1 million. As of February 29th, district had a combined cash balance of 38.1 million for bank for all funds, no investment deposits, earned interest for the month of 16,1,484 and year to date of $880,000. Current interest rate continues to be 1.804%. As of March 12th, outstanding state payments total 3.9 million. County sales tax proceeds received during the month are $994,000 for December collections. Fiscal year-to-date receipts are 5.13 million.
Anyone have any questions, Mr. Fretz?
Mr. Fretz, with regards to the cash balance, do you, can you, can you just tell me where we were at last month and maybe where we were a year ago?
Cash balance last month was 46.6 million.
What was that again?
46.7 million at the end of January. And one year ago, one second.
Thank you, Mr. Fretz.
In the property tax lobby, when will you be getting more property taxes in?
Property taxes will start commencing in May.
In May?
Correct. I expect to get the extension in May, late this month, early April.
Okay. Anyone else? Hearing none, Superintendent's report?
Okay, you know, I really, I wanted to bring this up because it, it was a little bit before the, I guess, storm hit us with the coronavirus, but I did get a call from Bonnie Drew with the City of Springfield asking me to bring to the board's attention the notion of us giving a letter of support for some extensions of some TIF districts, and I have pulled out the resolution that Board Member Mars gave to the board, and we, we voted on and approved it. Or was it, oh, you, McFarland, one of the two down there. All right, so let me read the end of it, though. Let me read the end. Throw me off with you guys sitting in the wrong spots. All right, it said, therefore it now be resolved that the Board of Education will only support new TIF districts or the continuation of any TIF district if the City of Springfield includes a process approved by the Board of Ed that ensures a portion of the funds that would go into the TIF district instead are provided to the school district to support the operations of the district during the life of the TIF district, which is very similar to what we did when we extended the life of the downtown district. The Eastside TIF was a lot smaller that we extended, but I'll tell you, the two TIFs that they're talking about, this is not for action tonight, but something for us to consider and look forward to in the future. I think it's the last thing on anybody's mind, but if I bring it to you now, we can at least have one other thing to talk about other than this, this other issue. The Enos Park Neighborhood TIF District is going to expire in December of 2020, so next December. This area incorporates the portion of our city that is, also includes the new YMCA that's being built, and the city would like to extend the TIF to and capture all future development that would surround that YMCA area, so that would be where it would be extended. SHA Madison Park Place TIF is set to expire in December of 2022, so we have a little bit more time on that TIF, but the city would like to extend this TIF and kind of move the boundaries to include the Pillsbury Mills area, which you know has been in the media quite a bit lately. The city would certainly appreciate us considering this. I have some information that I will forward to the board that has pictures of these TIF districts, sort of an aerial view, a satellite view of these areas, and then it will also give you some information about the work that has been done during the life of the current TIF that's in place as to where it is now. Just to summarize, the Enos Park area has primarily been residential improvements and some, I mean, you know that there's a county market over there now and some things of that nature that have made that area good for its people, and I mean, obviously, there's been a lot of great improvement to the homes over there. I was the principal of McLernan prior to some of this work being done, and it's, it's a much nicer area and place and attractive to single families now that, that that work has been done. The Madison Park Place speaks for itself, it's completely been filled with the Madison Park Place development, and so when you drive over there, you can see what it's done for that community, and we all know that Pillsbury Mills is there. So we can send out this information. I ask for you to consider it individually and think about it and bring back any future comments or thoughts to additional board meetings so that we can issue a letter one way or the other, and we could definitely include the resolution in that letter as well.
I would just recommend that instead of waiting to devise a letter, we go back to the city now, using that resolution and saying, if you want our support, this needs to be built in. And what I'm saying on that is, it needs to be built in that any kind of extension is going to include some kind of kickback to the school district to support the school district. Because what happens is all of that improvements you just mentioned are great, and actually, I live very closely in this park, so I see it every day. The problem is, Enos Park improves, more people move into Enos Park, more people go to McLernan, more people go to Ridgely, but we don't see any additional dollars from those improvements for 20 years. More of this is extended, an additional seven to nine years. So at that point, we got more people coming into the school district, which is amazing, but we don't have money to support them. So if we wait for the letter, I think the city will already move on and have their plan in place and say, take it or leave it, whereas if we go to them now and say, we will get your letter of support if we do this.
I've already kind of given that tip, given that tip their way, and I told them I'd bring it to you tonight, and so thank you for giving me your feedback now, prior to later. I appreciate that, yes.
I would hope that you wouldn't ask for a kickback.
Well, I don't think we use that word now. That is not the word I would utilize.
I do have a question, the Madison Park Place TIF, would that include the projected or the, the intermodal mass transit up that they're talking about in that location?
Um, no, because that would be, that would be way to the south, and that's kind of being funded through other, other sources. And so this, what they're asking is just really that, that subsection of town that is adjacent to or around the current Pillsbury Mills, from what I understand. I'll send you the maps so you can see, it actually draws out and has the lines from a satellite view so that you can see what they're asking for.
Where did you get those from?
Bonnie Drew from the City of Springfield reached out to me directly to bring it to an open meeting and, and talk about it.
Okay, I think on the, on the Enos Park TIF, we need to have some kind of idea with what they're going to use it for, if it's going to be businesses and, you know, something beyond residential. You need to know that upfront, you know, how much of that area.
I think there's some lots of land.
Because you have the medical school district over there that kind of encompasses some of that, I think.
You're right. So, yeah, I, I think I, I wanted to bring it so that you then, when you have some contacts for when I send you the packet, you can look through it, and we can see, see where we need to go. So if you want to get your mind off of the pandemic, we can take a look at that and keep some work going.
You know how TIFs exciting.
I will, that's, everybody has their thing.
Anybody else? All right, we'll move on to Consent Action Items. Superintendent Gill?
Hey, President Zimmers, I'm a member of the board. I recommend approval of consent action items 11.2 through 11.4 as described in the corresponding resolution.
Second. Any discussion?
The notation was 10 point something?
Oh, gosh, did I? 10 point, it's written wrong in the, in the blue, so I apologize. 10.2 through 10.6 as a, as a, in the action items.
I'll move to that one.
That's right. Sorry about that.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Mathis?
Aye.
McFarland?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Ringer?
Aye.
Zimmers?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mars?
Aye.
That is seven aye votes.
Okay, we'll now move on to Roll Call Action Items, Approval of Personnel Recommendations.
Mrs. Sherman?
President, excuse me, President Zimmers and members of the board, the superintendent recommends adoption of the personnel recommendations with the following changes. Page one, letter A, classified, item one, please remove. Page two, letter B, classified, item three, please remove. Page three, certified leave of absence, item six, change the extension of leave of absence to March 30th, 2020.
Okay, we have a motion?
Go.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
McFarland?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Ringer?
Aye.
Zimmers?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mars?
Aye.
Mathis?
Aye.
That is seven aye votes.
Okay, 11.2, approval of a resolution for reduction of force of non-certified personnel.
Mrs. Sherman?
President Zimmers and members of the board, the superintendent recommends adoption of the following resolution. Whereas current and projected financial circumstances of the district necessitate reduction in the number of non-certified personnel employed by the board, now therefore be resolved that the board hereby honorably dismisses non-certified personnel as presented for the reason of economic necessity, such honorable dismissal to take effect upon the expiration of the present school term unless otherwise indicated.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, can you explain how this works annually?
Or can you just explain what positions we, we do this?
So these are grant-funded positions. These are all in the adult ed program, and upon knowing that grant money is secured, we rehire annually, so this is an annual release to be safe as the, as the economic necessity.
Any others?
So, these are just grant-funded, because I thought we were not releasing people anymore.
We are not in any other way?
No, this is, this annually with these funds, with adult ed, we do this every spring.
How many positions does that include?
I can go into the, just one second, if you want to know the exact number. I can go into the, just one second, if you want to know the exact number. For the current resolution, it is about, oh, I apologize.
Yeah, this one, the next one.
First one's a non-certified.
I apologize. I was on, it's been a long day. I was on the next resolution. This current resolution are non-provationary teaching assistants, and they are released and rehired in the order for which they're hired in the summer for the first two years that they're in the position. What we didn't release were special ed attendants.
Okay, so why wouldn't we do a fix for teaching assistants?
We don't have a shortage in these positions, and this has always been the process, and then they're recalled in seniority order. Because we, the number of kindergartens that we have each year can shift. And these are, most of these are kindergarten, and that that number changes every year based on student enrollment. And so in June, we re-call.
In their letter, it says you have reasonable reassurance of rehire in the system.
They will be, right, and these people are, and this is done for the first two years. You're right, Ms. Johnson, we've been moving away from it and other jobs slowly. This is the last one.
And it's only not, it's.
But we're still doing it.
No, well, we've moved, we used to do it for a lot more, and over time, you're right.
I think it would help, how many, in each of these groups?
How many people?
Yeah, I think that would help.
While she's looking at, Mr. President, I might retract my motion, because I, a long day as well. I'm a family member involved in this one.
Okay.
So do we have a motion?
Sorry.
There are 26.
So either motion, sorry.
Mr. Miller's second and the last one, so we'll need somebody else to second.
I'll make a motion.
All right.
Thank you.
Second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Miller.
Aye.
Ringer.
Aye.
Zimmers.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
Mathis.
Aye.
McFarland.
I have to state into the reason I mentioned.
Okay, that is six aye votes and one abstention.
Okay, 11.3, approval of a resolution for reduction in force of Lawrence Education Center non-certified personnel.
I've already given my explanation. I will read this resolution. President Zimmers and members of the board, the superintendent recommends adoption of the following resolution. Whereas current projected financial circumstances of the district necessitate reduction in the number of Lawrence Education Center non-certified personnel employed by the board, and whereas grant funding for the Lawrence Education Center program fluctuates from year to year and is therefore unreliable as a revenue stream to the district, now therefore be resolved that the board honorably dismisses Lawrence Education Center non-certified personnel as presented for the reason of economic necessity. Such honorable dismissal to take effect upon the expiration of the present school term unless otherwise indicated.
Do you have a motion on this one? So.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Ringer.
Aye.
Zimmers.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
Mathis.
Aye.
McFarland.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
That is seven aye votes.
Okay, 11.4, approval of a resolution regarding non-renewal of certified personnel.
President Zimmers and members of the board, the superintendent recommends adoption of the following resolution. Whereas the district employs a first-year probationary teacher to be identified at the board meeting of March 16th, 2020, where it is recommended, a recommendation of the superintendent, that this first-year probationary employee not be re-employed for the next ensuing school term. Now therefore be resolved that the board shall and does hereby determine that the teacher shall not be re-employed for the 2020-2021 school term, and that his or her present contract of employment shall terminate at the end of the current school term. The board hereby authorizing and directing the president and secretary to give this probationary teacher written notice of such termination in accordance with section 2411 of the School Code of Illinois.
Motion?
Move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Zimmers.
Aye.
Johnson.
Present.
Mars.
Aye.
Mathis.
Just standing from this vote because I'm still working through my training.
Okay. McFarland.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Ringer.
Aye.
That is five aye votes and the two abstentions.
Okay, the next two resolutions have to do with bonds, which we discussed at the last board meeting. I will have Mr. Frentz explain each one. We're going to start with 11.5.
President Zimmers, members of the board, the next item on the agenda is adoption of a resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed $10 million taxable general obligation limited tax school refund bonds, series 2020A, and not to exceed $14 million general obligation limited tax school bonds, series 2020B of Springfield School District Number 186, Sagmen County, Illinois, for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds. Copy of the resolution has been prepared in service.
Do you have a motion?
Move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So are these ones that we've already discussed before, or we're just extending the levy to now to pay for them?
That's correct. It finalizes your approval of the issue. That's all.
Anything else? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
Mathis.
Aye.
McFarland.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Ringer.
Aye.
Zimmers.
Aye.
That is seven aye votes.
Okay, 11.6.
President Zimmers, members of the board, the next item on the agenda is adoption of a resolution entitled Resolution Provided for the Issue of Not to Exceed $75 Million General Obligation Bonds, Ultimate Revenue Source, Series 2020C of the district, and for purpose of improving the sites of and altering, repairing, and equipping school buildings and facilities of the district, and providing for the levy of a direct annual tax to pay the principal and interest on said bonds. A copy of the resolution has been prepared in service.
Second. Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, on this one, we received our information based on the interest rates at the time, and of course, the world's changed a little bit in a few months. So we'll be going back and looking at those interest rates to see if we can augment our plan based on the fact that we're probably going to be getting a little more in terms of principal rather than interest payments on this now.
You want to answer?
I am in touch with our bond consultant on a daily basis, and we realize that the market has been volatile, especially over the last week, as we all know. So we do anticipate, as of now, pretty markets up for sale this Thursday, the 19th, but we understand that can change depending on what our bond consultant recommends. It's PMA that may come back and recommend in accordance with Stiefel or underwriter that we either delay or bump up a day or two depending on the market, but we don't have to do it right away. Assuming we do issue this week, we do still anticipate closing on bonds by April 9th and receiving full proceeds at that time.
Yeah, what I'm getting at here is, because the rates may be lower, we may have more principal that could go into plans that we hadn't originally had. For example, potentially looking at different facility improvements and things of that nature.
Yeah, moving up things on the timeline, certainly. We're ready, and we're ready to go.
We certainly hope so. But the bond market has not been very strong last week, so we're hoping it'll pick up.
Anybody else? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Mars.
Aye.
Mathis.
Aye.
McFarland.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Ringer.
Aye.
Zimmers.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
That is seven aye votes.
Okay, 11.7, approval of travel expenses for Board Member Johnson.
All right, the next two resolutions go into the, we're living in the world of hope that everything will continue. A lot of our conferences and professional developments have been canceled or altered in the past, but to move forward and do so in the right frame of mind, we are approving the travel expenses for Board Member Johnson, and we're approving that the Board of Education approves travel expenses as follows. For Judith Johnson to attend the Avid Conference from June 21st through 23rd, 2020, this is zero registration cost to the district because Avid does pay for and allow the Avid board members to attend for free. What we do have to pay for is transportation and room and board, and so those are transportation for $519, hotel for $653, meals for $140, and any miscellaneous that comes along the way, up to $82.
Oh, where'd you get that $519?
These figures.
That's different than what's showing on.
I agree. I asked the same question.
These figures are from last year. What the figures should be are what she's going to read for Tiffany.
I can give you the figures.
Those are this year's figures.
The correct figures. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know.
All right, so bottom line is, they're going to be the same for both of the two board members, and we can come back and amend if we need to at another time, because these are the board, these are the numbers I was given to read today.
I was told that the amount, it's the second, the second one for Tiffany, those are the amounts that are correct.
The easiest way to do this is I would make a motion to approve travel.
I have it right here. I can read it.
The secretary from the travel.
Well, I need to know, what are the second figures? I have.
Would you like me to read the correct figures?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Transportation, $350, hotels, $670, $670 and 80 cents, meals, $140, and miscellaneous, $130.
Okay, so on mine, I would ask that you would amend it. I always pay for my own meals, and I never have any miscellaneous.
Okay.
Okay.
What?
No entertainment.
I pay for myself, okay? I know how to do that.
So do we need to make another motion to amend?
So moved, I've amended.
Okay. That we're taking off meals and miscellaneous for Board Member Johnson. Okay, all right?
Right.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, you need a second to vote, sir.
Second. Second. Okay. Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Mathis.
Aye.
McFarland.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Ringer.
Aye.
Zimmers.
Aye.
Johnson.
I abstain.
Mars.
Aye.
Okay, that is six aye votes and the noted abstention.
Okay, 11.8.
Okay, so this is for the same notion for Board Member Mathis with the same figures that were read earlier, zero registration, $350 of transportation, hotels, $670, meals, $140, and miscellaneous up to $130.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote.
McFarland.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Ringer.
Aye.
Zimmers.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
Mathis.
Aye.
She, would you have to abstain?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
That is six aye votes and one abstention.
Okay, 11.9, approval of review and revision to board policies, section 100 and 200.
Okay, whereas the Board of Education of Springfield District 186 maintains board policy manuals giving direction to the district, and whereas such policy and manuals reflect case law, legal rulings, legislation, legislation, and district practice, now therefore be resolved that the board approves the attached, reviewed, and revised policies.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
These are just continued updates that we've been working on through the Policy Committee that you all see before.
And what areas do they cover?
Section 1, help me out, Julie, section 100.
Section 2.
100 and 200.
Yes, so what are the titles for those sections that I have in front of me?
Just a second. The first one is.
School district organization.
School district organization, and the second one is board, Board of Education.
The second one is board what?
Board of Education, our policies.
Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Miller.
Aye.
Ringer.
Aye.
Zimmers.
Aye.
Johnson.
I'm going to vote present.
Mars.
Aye.
Mathis.
Aye.
McFarland.
Aye.
That is six aye votes and one abstention.
Okay, 11.10, approval of revisions to board policies which have specifically to do with board vacancies.
Whereas the Board of Education of Springfield District 186 maintains board policy manuals giving direction to the district, and whereas such policy and manuals reflect case law, legal rulings, legislation, and district practice, now therefore be it resolved that the board approves the attached policy relating to board member vacancies.
Motion?
So moved.
Second? All right. Any discussion?
This is just, what is this, third reading, fourth reading? Hasn't really changed a whole lot. Under section 3A, the word "school" was added for board member trustee and treasurer, and those were the only changes since last time. It's the same language otherwise.
Thank you for considering the change. I appreciate that.
No problem, and thank you for the quick turnaround.
Yeah, not a problem.
Any other?
So this does not address the coin flip part? Is that gone, or is that part of something else?
There is no, let's see, it still does have the language. It says, "A tie may be settled."
And which part is that, in 230?
It is in 230.01, under section 5.
Page one. Page one.
If the board member does not select a replacement member by majority, the board may consider flipping a coin to settle a two-way tie. And that was in there last time unchanged.
Do you have an issue with that?
Yeah, I don't like that being in there. I think that the board at that time ought to be able to decide what they want to do with it and not put in there that there's a coin flip to decide a tie. I think it should be discussion and whatnot on that. I do object to that part of it.
It did say shall decide before, and then that was changed to may. So it is just an option that a future board member would not be aware of. It wouldn't be binding.
I'm going to make a suggestion here, because it has been a long time since we've talked about this. I feel, can I make a motion or a suggestion that we table this till we can reread it? I know this has been on the docket forever.
A fifth reading?
What?
A fifth reading?
Well, now that he mentions this, I don't remember not the coin flip either. I got a little concerned about that, too. I want to reread it before I vote on it.
It could be any number of ways. It's just advising future board members that there could be an equitable way to settle a tie that would involve drawing straws, ping pong ball, flipping a coin, anything other than just saying the regional office has to figure it out.
I guess my point, though, that's their job.
Actually, it's our job.
Well, it is, but if we can't come to a resolution within the frameworks, I just don't like a coin flip. It's like.
Well, you wouldn't have to use it. At least somebody would be aware that that is a way that they could come to an agreement.
Yeah, I guess we understand the intent. My problem with it is down the road, when none of us are on this board, how are they going to interpret that, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Well, I mean, it says you may, it doesn't say shall, so I think that's pretty clear that it doesn't bind you to that.
Am I the only one that?
Well, I agree with you.